Great, hello everybody, welcome to the June 26 Watership Planning Commission meeting. Our first item up is I will call this meeting to order. And then we can move on to the approval of the agenda in the meeting minutes. First, I'll ask, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? And we'll just do the meeting minutes at the same time unless anyone has comments on the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pence, I will move to approve the agenda and minutes as published and distributed.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Verling, I'll second that.
All right, and any discussion? Hearing none, Melissa, I think you're up for a roll.
Yep, we'll take a roll call, so Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Beering.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
And Commissioner Weaver.
Hi. Alright, sounds like that is passed, so now was Troy able to join us? Doesn't look like it, so I think Ryan, he'll be up for to cover the SWCD.
Yep, Chair Commissioners, so I'll cover the SWCD report and just kind of pick out a few of the highlighted items. So first graph, pretty used to this one, it's the requests and projects, and as you can kind of see when you look back, it's remaining steady, it's not at the highs of kind of previous months, but still remaining pretty high overall, hovering right around the 200 requests. And I think they've said in the past, once they get over that 200, it starts to get to be a little, little difficult, so I think they're kind of hovering right at, right about there. This graph is newer to the packet, and it is kind of covering the soil health practices that there, that there's a heavy emphasis on. So obviously, we're, you know, only halfway through the year, and this should continue to grow, but you can kind of see cover crops, no till and nutrient management, you know, the acres that are approved for projects for each of those practices, so. Be interesting to see that throughout the year and then, you know, compare it to last year, which would have been the highest that we've ever had. I should also get started, I should have said this to start, Troy did want to extend his apologies for not being able to, to make the meeting as well, so. Just wanted to make sure everyone knew that. Next thing, the Soil and Water did have on June 14th, a stabilized shoreline workshop, and so that's where they invite residents in the county to attend a workshop, a lot of times it's a lakeshore residence, and they kind of go through different things that they can do to stabilize a shoreline, whether that's converting over turf grass to natives, or if there is erosion occurring, you know, that might then lead to an actual request being logged, and so I just wanted to pass that along, and from what I understand, it was pretty well attended for the people that were, that were there. Now we'll skip down to kind of one of their bigger programs in the spring is the native tree and seed and plant sale program, so. The seed and plant program sale wrapped up here recently, and then obviously the tree program wrapped up in April. But they have the final numbers, and as you can see, they did pretty well this year, so. Six hundred and forty customers in total, over thirty thousand trees were sold, and then nearly a hundred and forty plant kits, and then obviously some seed mixers and some other miscellaneous things as well. Nearly fifteen hundred plug plants, so that's where you'd have little native plugs and kits that people buy and implant them in their landscaping or around their house. So, pretty good, those are, those are pretty high numbers, you know, when you're getting close to forty thousand in trees, that's, that's pretty impressive. Skip down precipitation, as everyone can imagine, you can see it's quite low for the month of May. Got to imagine, unless something happens drastically here in the next week, probably going to see that be pretty low for June as well, so. The dryness kind of continues. Now, one of the bigger jumps here is the erosion and sediment control program, so as you can see, the, the number of permits and plan or views is up quite a bit in inspections from the previous month, which is to be expected to as we kind of get out of that spring, that lingering spring that we had, that, that should continue to rise for a little bit throughout the summer, and then obviously we're getting the fall, so it's going to taper again. Not as much in the Wetland Conservation Act that's going on. Buffer law, so they did have one buffer that they had sent a notice of non-compliance, and they confirmed that it was then planted, and that was in Cedar Lake Township. And then they did flag another one in Sand Creek Township, so they'll be following up with them to see if, if indeed a buffer needs to be planted on that one as well, so it's good to see voluntary compliance there with the buffer law on that, that first one. Equipment rental program, it's similar to the cover crop or soil health program that, you know, we're only halfway through the year, so we should continue to see that rise and even, you know, moving the drills and everything recently, so probably even the next staff report, it'll be quite a bit higher than, than it is right now, so. It should, I would imagine it's going to get close to the previous years of plantings, and that's good to see the equipment getting out there and getting used. Just going through kind of the cost year grant status and what each of the organizations has been awarded, and then what they spent and what we've got available, so pretty decent amount, you know, we've got over six hundred thousand available between SWCD and WMO and grant funds. And that's partly, we've got a few grants that are going on right now that we are pushing and doing some marketing for the SWCD staff, it's kind of putting together flyers and doing some targeting for us, so hopefully we have bring some more projects through the door here. And then just goes through kind of the sources of where everything's at, so the various grants that we've got, our EPA, our watershed-based funding, and then our local dollars as well here at the bottom. And then I'll just wrap up by saying here's some of the action items that they've done for practices in the last month, so. With that, I'll say any questions?
Thanks so much, Ryan, any questions for Ryan? Right, hearing none, I think we can move on to the WMO updates, and Melissa, you're covering those?
Um, I am not, Vanessa did not send those to me, so I think she's still trying to get on, she was having some technical difficulty, she's working with IT, so maybe we could just skip over that for now and maybe come back to it once she can get on the meeting.
Okay, that works for me, I'll try to keep an eye out if she jumps back on. Alright, then moving on to program updates from Ryan.
Chair Commissioners, just a few today, so most of it is related to our CIPs. So they're both moving along, the Pika Creek Tributary Ravine Stabilization, we've got a site visit scheduled tomorrow. I did send out the thirty percent design plans to the landowners and have kind of spoken with them all recently. Just wanting to get their comments and making sure they understand the plans, they, it's not always easy to understand what we're proposing out there, and so. I'm available to them all day tomorrow while we're onsite, we're going to be kind of flagging some of the locations of the rock check dams and till protections. Now, which are kind of the main two things that they're proposing in that ravine to stabilize it, so. Check dams to kind of slow the water as it comes down the ravine, and the till protections are where you've got some sloughing on the side slopes of those ravines caving in, that they would address some of those larger ones. So that'll be tomorrow. I've got, the landowners can provide comments on those thirty percent designs until mid-July, I've got one landowner that's on vacation for quite a while, so. It's because that one's not getting constructed until next year, it's, it's, it's alright that it can be at a little bit slower pace. Last thing with that one is that we have a kind of proactive meeting regarding permitting with that project, so I met on our stream bank site, which we call the Xanadu Stream Bank Stabilization, it's slated for this year with the DNR and SWCD, so I'd submitted our permits for that project already in anticipation of fall construction, and at that meeting, we discussed the Pika Creek project and thought, maybe it's good to go out there and look at that, if there is a delineation that's needed, then we have ample time to get out there and do that, so. That meeting is scheduled for mid-July. So I'll be going out there with the area hydrologist and then likely Troy then from the SWCD and take a peek at it, it would be nice having some of those stabilizations flags, so they know where those, you know, potential impacts would be in relation to the ravine to get a better idea, so. More to come with that. The Xanadu project, so we are between ninety and a hundred percent on the plans. So we, like I mentioned, we just went out with the DNR and SWCD looking at the site. It sounds like the direction that we're going is the SWCD will transfer their WACA duties, I guess, if you will, to DNR, so DNR will basically be taking over all the permitting for that end of it, and then obviously we've still got the Army Corps too as well, so I didn't really get any negative feedback on it, so. Anticipating that everything will go smoothly with the permitting there on that project. The next step is going to be obtaining easements from the landowner, which I've been in contact with, it's nice, this landowner went through the same process a few years ago, so nothing should be too surprising. And he seems like he's on board with, hopefully we can get those all wrapped up in July. And then final design should also happen in July, and then last thing is basically getting that bid packet ready to go up for bids in the fall, so we're sitting pretty good with timing of that project and getting everything ready to go. So, pretty happy with both CIPs where they're at. Last two things, so I mentioned before that we're going to do a fish survey on Sand Creek up and downstream of the falls in Jordan, just to kind of see if there's a big diversity and and what that could potentially look like in the future for different options. So that is starting in July as well, so July seems to be a busy month for getting out there and doing some site visits, so. The consultant that we hired, I want to first go out and just do some site visits, see where we wanted to do sampling, and then after that, actually do the, the fish survey itself. And then the last item, if you remember, we had Erin Wynott from Field the Flyway come talk at our meeting either in January or February about the wetland project in Country Hollows Development. And that project is just at the point of getting contract, the contract signed and executed. So once we do that, then Erin has the green light to kind of go out there and start doing the work on it, so just wanted to pass along that update that that project should be starting here. In the next week or so, I would anticipate that it'll get signed, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Questions? Okay, hearing none, we can move on to Melissa's program updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just moving my notes over here so I can read through them. So curly leaf pond re-treatments occurred this year on Cedar, McMahon, and Odell Lakes. Earlier this season, when I did pre-treatment surveys, we did a full survey on Thol Lake, so I could get a full survey in this year. We didn't find barely any curly leaf on Thol, which is actually a good thing, so we didn't end up treating it this year, but I did get a full lake survey, which is good because we haven't been able to get one in a few years, just due to algae coming on really quickly there. Aquatic plant surveys, which I go back out after all the treatments are done and survey the lake and see how the treatment, how effective the treatment was, I got two of those scheduled over the next two weeks, Cedar and Odell, and then McMahon as well, so. I won't be going back out on Thol, I did drive by it. It was Friday morning, and I'm just a little nervous to go out on it because I do see quite a bit of duckweed and stuff growing already, so. The Shell Lakes Forum, I know I talked about this before, so back in twenty twenty-one, when we were experiencing our first real drought year, we got a lot of calls from people on the lakes concerned about the lake levels dropping and asking questions about how the lakes reacting, and so we decided this year to put together set aside some budget to educate residents on what shell lakes are, shallow lake ecology, how do they act during different weather conditions, especially drought years, so I'm working on planning that right now. I've toured a couple different spaces that we could host that, because we're hoping for about three hundred people. We are going to go with Mystic Lake Event Center. The room was just a really nice room setup for this kind of classroom presentation, they have a separate entrance for people to come into with a short walk right to the room, it was just everything just kind of lined up really nice to, to host it there, so. We are going to be doing that on Wednesday night, October eleventh, and I'll have more information to come before then. The county fair, so we're changing things up a little bit, and we're going to create something new for the county fair this year for the WMO, we're going to do an educational display about public water accesses, we saw, we've also been getting calls about the public water accesses. So we're going to do probably some kind of like a big map or a chart or something on public water accesses, who takes care of them? You know, where you can find them around the county, and then we, we're thinking about having some kind of interactive display. Maybe tag your favorite lake or stream or some kind of, or tag your favorite water recreational activity or something like that, so it's still, still in the works on what exactly we're going to do, but. Next is the, you know, creating a new logo and branding for the Scott County MALL, which we're really excited about doing. We got three proposals from different graphic designers, we've recently decided to go with Studio Lola. They are the, out of the Twin Cities. There were two companies that were the exact, almost the exact same amount of money, Studio Lola and another company. And then the third company was a little bit higher. But Studio Lola, just, she had really good references. Just thought her work was very very professional, kind of fit what we, what our expectations were of, of creating new logos, so. So the first step in working with them is they sent us a list of questions to get to know our organization better and to get some background information, to kind of put some thoughts together on the logo. And so I thought, since we have some extra time, there's a few questions on this kind of inventory that they sent us that I thought maybe I could get some feedback from the commission here today. So the first question was, you know, what is the Scott County MALL's top five strengths? And so I'm wondering if if your commissioners would be willing to just kind of say what you think some of our strengths are.
Partnership. Outreach also comes to mind.
Commissioner Pence, I, I think education is a part of it.
Okay, that's good, we appreciate feedback, no, that's great. Staff still, staff still has to go through these questions too, so we can add on to a few of these, the second question was, what are ten words you would use to describe what the WMO does, so they can be single words, so ten words to describe what we do.
So as a side note, I love that you guys are doing this, but I am so uncreative, that's why I'm so bad at coming up with stuff. I would just think, like, care, I see, that, that's a word, just comes to mind, care too, but it's like caring for the environment and caring for, you know, even our producers in the area, you know, and just relationship building and I mean, some kind of environmental aspects should be in there, some kind of conservation aspects should be in there. I feel like I'm not being very helpful.
Oh no, this is good.
Actually, Commissioner Weaver, it's, it's actually really interesting that you did point out the word producers. Very few watershed management organizations in the metro would have our producers be part of our mission, right? But they are, so I think that is a unique characteristic of us, not just urban landowners, but our rural landowners and our farming community, right? That's a big deal, that's a big part of who we are.
Anybody else have any ideas they want to throw out there?
We might have to leave it open-ended and give back to you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem, so I have one last question, this one's a little tougher. But what are three measurable results? Our clients, partners, residents' experience after working with us? So three measurable results. Who work with us, what do they experience?
With Commissioner Pence, clearly the number of projects that we do, the number of individual organizations or individual people that we partner with.
This is Commissioner Casilius, I, I would say some sort of goal improvement based on whatever it is that those people approached us for, whether it was, you know, some sort of program management or changing something about, you know, their environment, whatever, but I, I would say an improvement.
Anyone else? Okay, that's all I had, thank you so much, that's all I have for updates at the moment.
Alright, thanks, Melissa. Do we want to jump back to Vanessa now? It looks like you were able to get on Vanessa for your updates.
Thank you, Commissioner Weaver and Commissioners. So, it has been actually a rather busy month, we've had a lot of activity with some of our partnership projects. I know a couple of those will be coming up later, so I won't get into those. But also some new things that are coming up, we were invited to participate in Met Council's groundwater policy planning group subcommittee as well. So groundwater does seem to be an up and coming area of interest for the metro region, so we're happy to help participate in that area and help kind of hopefully lead Scott County's priorities in that effort as well. We have a lot of, you know, as Ryan's talking about, the CIPs that are coming up, that he's working on, we're getting into those. We are gonna start slowly working on beginning the groundwater plan update. Obviously, we, we did push it back a couple of years, but we do need to kind of slowly get working on updating that plan to be consistent with our planning efforts. We don't want to overlap it too much with the WMO's plan process, because obviously we are limited with staff and writing two plans at the same time would be challenging at best. We are gonna, you know, try to be really thoughtful of different groundwater projects that are going on right now in the communities, because obviously we don't want to interfere or interact with those. So we are going to be taking it, you know, really slow and meeting with the LGUs first before really getting into the planning process with outreach and community engagement, so. Definitely stay tuned for that, um, we are also in the process of hiring a new administrative assistant, as you know, Dominique was our previous administrative assistant. Unfortunately, with her, her schedule and her husband's schedule, she had to step back to put more time into her family. But we do have interviews coming up with that, so there's a lot going on, it's a busy summer, but it's a great summer, and I definitely stand for any questions.
Yes, Vanessa. Any questions for Vanessa? Okay, hearing none, we'll jump back to our ongoing business, we're at the One Watership One Plan update. I think the biggest update for folks is that right now, we are trying to figure out what type of entity moving forward our planning area will have to make decisions, so. We have this agreement to work on the plan part of it, but that doesn't take us through how we're going to spend additional money that we get to carry out the plan. So we need to work with the other LGUs, SWCDs and counties and to, to figure out how we want to do that, and there's some disagreement about how we want to do that, so. We're not sure how that's going to go, there's going to be a meeting in July where they expect to make a decision on how they want to, you know, form that organization, I guess, for lack of a better term, I'm trying to compass all the different types of ways we can, we can group together. You know, moving forward, but that's, that's kind of the biggest news right there, otherwise the planning part is, is moving along also. We just haven't talked a whole lot about that in the last couple of months, so that's really all I have, Vanessa, Commissioner Pence, do you have anything to add? Or their questions? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to our new business, and it looks like Melissa, you are covering the Eagle Scout project.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if you remember at the April meeting, we had Nick Sting and his father come, and he presented to you his ideas to help improve Lagoon Park in Jordan and help the Mill Pond water quality. His request, if he could maybe scroll to the second page of that. So this picture wasn't working at the April meeting, but here it is, so this is kind of the area that they're, that Nick is looking at to kind of help improve the water quality, there's a little bit of erosion going on there, not much vegetation as you can see. And he wants to do some kind of a plant, native planting there, it's about two hundred square feet. And after some a little bit of research into seeing what native plants are costing today and a little bit of other materials, I put together a plant list and a cost estimate, and we're looking at, you know, up to about six hundred dollars to help put a native planting in there to, to stop any erosion. He did have the idea of using maybe like a biolog at the toe of the area, but I, I just don't really don't think it meets that, you know, the, the Mill Pond does have a water control structure, so. The water level is pretty much controlled. I just think that if, if a planting goes in there, it could help stabilize that area a little bit better. He also did state at the meeting how he would take care of it, and I just kind of wanted to go over that one more time for the record. That to keep the plant safe, that he would set up a stone field retention wall, and then some posts and a rope fence along, around the planting area so that people won't walk over them or trample them. He was going to look at a landscaping company to get some wood mulch, for them to volunteer some wood mulch for weed control. And then he himself, because he doesn't look far away, would go and water the plants at least once a week until they're well established. And then he was also going to ask his troop to help assist him with getting the project in. We are supportive of the project, you know, and I think it's good when young people are thinking this far in advance about water quality and how they can help improve the quality of our surface waters. So, you know, I would continue to provide any kind of technical assistance that he needs to complete this if this is something that the commission thought was valuable, but. So this is an action item, and staff is recommending a Scott County MALL donation of up to six hundred dollars for native plants and materials. So the purpose of this agenda item is to So the purpose of this agenda item is to um. For the commission to consider a recommendation of of that donation. And I'll stand for any questions if anyone has any.
Thanks, Melissa. Do you know what the bounce is on the Mill Pond?
I don't, but I could, I could ask Megan. Um. I I did look up there, there is the, the dam is registered under the. The dam inventory, the federal dam inventory, so there might be some more information there. Um.
And I, I support this. I have no problem with this. I just am wondering. How high it'll be above, depending on what plant should be planted there. Or how often they might get wet, so that would be my only concern, is that I'd hate to see them die if, you know, they get inundated for too long.
Yeah, in in my thought is to uh propose transitional plants, so plants that can withstand longer periods of water.
Yeah, nice.
Um but I could check with Megan too, to see if she has confined in record of how high it would bounce.
Other questions for Melissa? Hearing none, do we have a motion that we would support the funding of up to six hundred dollars for this project?
This is Commissioner Casilius. Uh I'll make a motion that we support the effort with six hundred dollars.
Commissioner Weaver, I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I think we have rule.
Uh Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pence?
Hi.
Commissioner Verly?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, I think that's it for this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner.
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pence?
Hi.
Commissioner Verly?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, thanks, everybody. We'll see you next month.
Great, thank you.